As Chair of the SAU 21 Joint Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video and/or electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting, and all members of the SAU 21 Joint Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen, and if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number: (646) 876-9923, and Webinar ID (83008000560), or by clicking on the website address as listed on the agenda. Providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, we previously gave notice to the public for the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the SAU 21 Office at www.sau21.org. Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please call (603) 926-8992, Extension 103, or email at REvans@SAU21.org. Adjourning the meeting if public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during the meeting, which is required under the right to know law. We will now take a roll call.
Anthony Lang.
Present, family in and out.
Barbara Goodman.
Present, family in and out.
Greg Parish.
Present, family in and out.
Jason Ferries.
Present, family in and out.
Jill Swayze. Absent. Brian Belanger.
Present, family in and out.
That wasn't Jill Swayze commenting, was it? Somebody commented? Okay. Danielle Strater. I will mark her as absent. Martin Tavishian.
Present with family.
Jermina Peterson.
Present with family in and out.
Tom Von Jess. I will mark him absent. Christina Kaiser.
Present with family in and out.
Horace Carter.
Present alone.
Jennifer Hubbard.
Present with family.
Jessica Brown. I will mark her absent. Kelly Huber.
Present with family.
Jim Kine.
Present and alone.
Rebecca Burdi.
Present, family in and out.
Sharon Gordon.
Present and alone.
Henry Marsh. I will mark Henry absent. Leslie LaFawn.
Present and alone.
Nicole Seiko.
Present and alone.
Tony Delano. I will mark Tony absent. Tricia O'Keefe.
Present and alone.
I have the roll call taken.
Thank you, Rhonda. Next is the approval of minutes.
Do I have a motion for approval for either one or both of the meetings?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from March 23 joint board meeting and May 5.
Thank you. We have a second?
Second.
Martin. Are you ready for the vote?
Ready for the vote, please.
Anthony Lang.
Yes.
Barbara Goodman.
Yes.
Greg Parish.
Yes.
Jason Ferries.
Yes.
Brian Belanger.
Yes.
Danielle Strater is not here. Martin Tavishian.
Yes.
Jermina Peterson.
Yes.
Christina Kaiser.
Yes.
Horace Carter.
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard.
Yes.
Kelly Huber.
Yes.
Jim Kine.
Yes.
Rebecca Burdi.
Yes.
Sharon Gordon.
Yes.
Leslie LaFawn.
Yes.
Nicole Seiko.
Yes.
And Tricia O'Keefe.
Yes.
Okay, I have that vote recorded.
I just heard.
Both minutes.
I just heard from Henry, he's not gonna make it tonight. Okay, our next. Next on the agenda is public comments. Do we have any?
Hmm, nope.
Okay, so we go.
Can I just ask you a question, Leslie? On the agenda, it doesn't state where there's a place that says other business, so if there's a question that needs to be asked by a board member, at what point do we ask that question if it's not on the agenda?
Oh, good point. Um. Is it not something that's on the agenda, you said?
It's not, no.
Okay. Um, Caroline, what do you think?
I think that's to your discretion, Leslie.
Okay. Um. Is it something that can be discussed in public, or is it non-public, do you know?
No, it's public.
Okay. Um, then, you know what? Let's do it now, public comment. If you've got something, go ahead.
Okay. So, today, I had a couple concerns that were brought to me, just being out in the community, regarding the weather tomorrow, and the kids at school still wearing a mask. There's been some concerns, there was definitely no intention that they were looking for remote whatsoever, but I didn't know if we would be able, or myself, would be able to make a motion to vote on individual schools on having possibly masks being optional. I know that staff has been given the opportunity for vaccinations. If there are students that haven't had that opportunity, or have not had a chance to get it done, you know, obviously, that's their right to wear a mask, but I think just from, you know, people talking and people being frustrated, and I know myself as a parent, and my children wearing, you know, not wearing masks during sporting events anymore, and everything opening up without, you know, the use of masks, that maybe at this point, you know, because we have been so cautious, that we give back the parents the rights to make the decision on what they feel is in the best interest of their children, especially with the heat coming and the low numbers of COVID. So I didn't know how I would go about tonight making a motion that each school will be given the opportunity to vote for their own school.
I'm gonna defer to Caroline on that.
So what I can speak to is that certainly this is a concern. You know, wearing a mask for staff and students is definitely something we wanna keep our eye on, and in fact, they considered that when creating the MOU and passing that in September. So what we do need to follow is what it says in there, and it does give us some, an option. So it says that, "Given that staff and students will be required to wear masks, heat issues will be monitored within the building. If the forecasted day exceeds that NOAA Extreme Caution Zone for the heat index, the superintendent, at her discretion, will implement the prescribed protocol, and students and staff will engage in remote learning for that day." So that is something that they considered at the beginning of the school year, and certainly, that is something that I would definitely put into action if there was something, you know, if it went into that extreme zone. As far as mask wearing, I know that the districts are doing mask breaks, and especially outside. You know, they're going outside and having mask breaks. That's something, even if it didn't go into, even if it didn't go into the extreme heat zone, that's something that I would put out to principals tonight. I just talked to somebody else about this, because there was, you know, they noted it was gonna be 90 or higher tomorrow, and some of our classrooms don't have air conditioning. I wanna put a note out to principal saying that, you know, make sure we're doing mask breaks, make sure we're getting outside in shaded areas, and we're making sure that students have access to as much water as they need. So that is something that we can do. As far as voting, individual districts, I don't know if that's ever occurred during a joint board meeting. I think Mr. Ferrera had his hand up. I'm not sure if he wanted to add something to that.
I had my hand up to get back in the meeting.
Okay.
But if you'd like me to add to it.
Come back. Well, I mean, if there was anything else as far as heat index or airflow in our schools, certainly, feel free to speak.
Well, I'm pretty sure that back in September, we were in a totally different situation. And again, if anybody is opting to wear a mask, or teachers, or staff, or students, that is their prerogative. But at what point do we let parents make a decision for what's best for their own child? We have completely taken all control away from them, and as a resident of Seabrook, I was voted in to speak for the children and the parents, and the parents are voicing that they feel that there has been enough opportunity for people to protect themselves by getting vaccinated, if that's what they choose to do. But at what point do we say, okay, you know what? It's the parents' discretion to do what they feel is right for their child, and if you would like to wear a mask as a teacher, or a staff member, or a student, you have that prerogative as well. But we're not giving any choices, and we've been doing this for a year and a half.
So as far as masks in general, getting away from the heat question, that is something that's in the MOU that we're required to ask staff and students, you know, to wear masks through the end of the school year. So we are beholden to that contract signed with the unions, but certainly, like I said, we need to create opportunities for kids to not wear masks, you know, especially during heat, so they can have breaks and so on.
Again, that was in September.
You know, the other thing I would add to that is that nothing has changed as far as the virus for kids. They're the same level of risk as they were in September.
Then why are there no sports using masks anymore?
The sports are using masks. I just came from a track meet where they were using masks.
Yeah.
Well, my child plays black football, they have no masks. The rim is now optional for basketball.
Yeah, that's not school.
But that's not school. That's outside of school.
Right, exactly, that's my point. They're not at school, so they're still not wearing masks everywhere like they were. Things have changed.
They have, but I think what we're saying, though, is we do have that agreement that we signed in September that goes through the end of the, it's a contract that goes through to the end of the year that says that the staff and students will wear masks. I think that's what we're being held to at this point.
And if it's helpful, one other thing I could add is that we have some students who are very vulnerable. You know, we have students who, even if, you know, when people wear masks, it's a big risk for them to even come into school. If they contract COVID-19, it's an incredible health risk for them. We have students with very significant disabilities. And, you know, if we say, okay, masks optional, they're at risk, and then they would have to stay home, and that's an inequitable situation where kids who are more at risk can't come to school. So it does provide more opportunity for kids with health issues to come into school when we keep true to the protocols. But, you know, I fully empathize. I know it's been a long year, and it's so much. It's been a really long year, yes.
I look forward to no masks, too.
Dr. Killian, this is Greg. If you've answered this question, I apologize for answering again, asking again. What are the state's guidelines or mandates at this point regarding masks in schools?
In schools, it is, they still recommend masks. They still recommend kids wearing masks, because they don't, they haven't had access to the vaccine, especially ages 11 and under. But certainly, it's not a requirement. There are some schools who have different protocols than we have. You know, some schools are stricter with cohorts, some schools are stricter with transitions, some are less restrictive with masks and distancing. I've heard some districts have three-foot distancing, and, you know, I wish we had that. Although I think the other side of it is, our districts have been in buildings five days a week longer than any other place I know of. Many districts, they got in when the executive orders asked them to come in, required them to come in, and all of our K through 4 at least have been in five days a week since September. So I'm really proud of that, and I'm proud of how far we've gotten. Thank you.
Do you think you'd get pushback from the union if you had this conversation with them?
Absolutely.
It's not about the union. We're here to represent the kids and the students and the parents. We've represented the union since day one. We've thought about what's in the best interest of the union since day one. Now it is time to start thinking about what parents want for their children. They send their children to public schools where they pay taxes to pay these teachers that have been represented by the union. And that is it. Yes, we've been in school, but the middle school just went back recently when the CDC said 100% that they were able to go back. Massachusetts has had kids at three feet distancing. We are still at six feet distancing. I mean, I understand we signed the MOU, and shame on us. But I promise you, I will not be signing that in September again.
We had to sign that to keep the business, the schools open, and I agree. I agree with everything you're saying, I really do. Our roadblock is the union right now in this MOU.
Well, you know what? Then I guess that we need to get a bunch of parents to start putting their foot down and saying, you're not gonna tell me what to do with my child anymore, because we have done everything we possibly can to make things smooth. We've abided by the rules, and we've had kids in classrooms with a mask on their face since day one. It is time to say, let the parents make their discretion for their children. If a teacher doesn't want to teach, then she can stay home. Because I know what the rules and regulations are. They use their sick time, and when they run out, they're all done. And I don't mean to be harsh, but we need to think about the kids now. We've thought about everyone else but the kids.
We also have three weeks left, so.
Right, let's do it now.
Of let's just finish out the year and keep everybody safe, and we'll come back in September. And this isn't on the agenda. I presented a topic I wanted to discuss and was told I could not do it. And so I feel like it's time to move on. This wasn't on the agenda.
No, but I represent the residents of Seabrook, and if they have a concern, then I have that right to bring that concern to the board.
Well, they have the right to come for public comment.
There was a letter that was sent to the Seabrook School Board that was never addressed on the same issue, and that's all I'll say.
Leslie, you have a hand raised?
Who's that?
Jim Kine.
Jim? Thank you, Caroline. Go ahead, Jim.
Sure. Kelly, quite frankly, I agree with you. I understand the fact that it's getting warmer, and the facts and circumstances are much different now than they were back in September. I think the other side of it is, we pretty much have, what, like 12 days left?
12 days, that's right.
And so in order to get this done, it just doesn't seem like it's very feasible. And so the way I've seen a copy of the letter that's been sent around, or at least one that was sent to our school board, I think there's a lot of great points in there, but really, I think the focus should be on next year when it comes to this topic, and we should probably move forward, just understanding that we have just over two weeks left. Let's get through the year. It's a very valid concern and a very valid issue. I'm not diminishing it at all. But just the, I think the process and the ability to actually achieve the ask here is so low in the amount of time. Like, if we had three months, it'd be a different story, but with a little over two weeks left, it's probably best to move forward and say, you know, this is probably something that we should be looking forward to as we move into the next school year.
So just to confirm, for summary and closure sake, I mean, we're saying that regardless of how we feel personally, how we wanna move forward, there's nothing that we could do barring banning teachers from the school. As far as the union is concerned, like, they would, if you came to them, they would say, yeah, that's not gonna happen, and then the last 12 days of school, we would, I don't know, have a strike? I mean, I'm not sure how that happens. Okay.
Well, at all, anyway, right.
So unfortunately, it just seems like it's a point that, as much as we would, I'm sure a lot of us would like it, it doesn't seem like it would even be feasible in any sense, really.
So what date does this MOU end?
Goes through the end of the school year.
June 15.
That would be for kids, yes.
Okay, so that means summer school, they will not be wearing a mask.
I don't believe that's been decided at this point.
We haven't decided that, but the MOU ends at that time.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment? All right, then we're gonna go to.
Sorry, you do have a hand raised, Leslie? I know you can't see them, so.
No, thank you, I appreciate that.
Brian Belanger.
I just wanted to add that I respect Kelly's opinion, but I do wanna say that I value all the teachers, and that that's not the feeling that many of us may have with regards to the union. So I just wanna say, we value our teachers and the hard work they put in, from my standpoint.
Thank you, Brian.
So I disagree.
All right, thank you. All right, so let's go on to, for action policies, action items. Policies, second read and adoption?
Yes, thank you. So you'll see there, the first group of policies is for this joint board to review and take action on. It would be a second read and adoption. The second list of policies, there are three policies that are exclusively for the high school, so those three are for your information only. We plan to bring them forward to the Winnicott meeting in a few weeks for the second read and adoption at that board meeting. Any questions?
Any questions on any of these policies?
Tom Von Jess has a hand up.
Hi, Tom.
I've got a question with the group, and I raised this, I think, last month at the North Hampton School Board meeting. It occurred to me, well, first of all, let me back up. So I truly value and understand the importance of the policy committee, and I appreciate those people who invest their time reviewing the policies. I also, first of all, because we're compliant, and we're compliant with laws and staying up to date that way, we were in a little bit of a mess before. It also makes sense to have alignment where we can across the SAU. But it occurred to me that as we're taking the recommendation of the policy committee, which I accept and agree with, that if we're voting on this to adopt as a joint board, we're adopting a joint board policy and not individual district policies, and I'm wondering if the correct process should be policy committee review, bring it to the individual boards for first read, and then voting at the individual boards to adopt, so that the individual boards have their policies, and if there needs to be a change from one board to another, it happens in that way.
Would you like me to address that?
Yes, please.
So a couple things are my thoughts on this. One, I think that, you know, how we set it up here is one option. You know, if there is the case that, you know, a few policies only apply to one school, so this could happen again. However, you know, in the situation that you described, Tom, if it's the case where, you know, perhaps for first read, one district requests a change and wants to keep that change, but the other districts do not, that is the practice, or the, you know, that is what we would do. So then we would just keep them separate, I believe, and then, you know, take them to second read and adoption if they were going to be different. But what I can tell you is that, you know, when you vote on these, you know, say you vote on these for second read and adoption tonight, we still separate them out by district, isn't that right, Rhonda? So Rhonda, it isn't only a one joint board policy from then on. She's separating them out and creating those in the framework for each individual district. So you can go into your board section of the board docs and on the SU 21 website, and you'll find, you know, Hampton Falls policy after you adopt, if you adopt these, you'll find them all separated out by board regardless. The SAU policies would just be for the SAU office and what we do itself.
Yes, I'm with you. So what I guess, so two questions. If we're voting as a joint board, aren't we voting on a joint board policy? Because we're not voting as a North Hampton, or Seabrook, or Hampton Falls, right? Or Winnicott, we're voting as a joint board here. So that's procedural standpoint, I'm wondering what we're really voting on, and if we are voting on our individual districts' policies. And the second thing is, is there a downside? I'm totally aligned with the process and review and the policy committee, but is there a downside to having individual districts vote on their policies so that they truly are district policies?
If I can just speak on that a little bit?
Please.
In the amount of time that I've been here at the SAU office, the boards tried to do it all individually, and there were so many policies that were required by law, and so many policies that are recommended, that are just kind of a small, basic policy. It didn't happen. We tried to do that, it didn't happen. You would have one district that would be way ahead of updating their policies, another district hadn't looked at policies since, you know, 2003, and they got so far behind that when something would come up and we would need to go find that policy, because you're looking, you know, some of them are very, in some ways, I wanna use the word simplistic, but because they weren't similar, just keeping track of who was doing what was, for me personally, it was a nightmare. I don't know how else to put it. You know, especially when their policy is required by law, to know that everybody is adopting them at the same time, you're adopting the policy, it keeps the wheels turning.
Yep.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, so 100%, and I agree with, we need a policy committee. We need to be reviewing the policies at the same time. We need to be having first read on the same policies in the same month, second read on policies in the same month. I'm simply suggesting, and I'll defer to the rest of the board, I'm simply suggesting that the second read and adoption probably makes more sense at the individual board meetings than at a joint board meeting, because we're voting on a joint board policy, we're not voting on district policies right now.
So just from my personal standpoint, maybe this isn't the correct thing to say, but when you're putting these policies out there and completing them, it's so much easier to do the process once versus doing the same job five times over and over again. And it's just more efficient, you know? And when it is the same policy, and nobody's making a change to anything, especially the required-by-law ones where you really can't necessarily change them, because that's what the law requires, it just makes, it's just more efficient. And I feel in everybody's best interest to just do it and keep, you know, then if you do have changes, then you can separate those out and do that individually. But in the meantime.
You can have changes if it's voted on at the joint board. So here's the thing, and I'll say one last thing, and then I'll let it go. I'm not sure that it's more work if we each voted on the second read of these policies at our individual board meetings in May, right? And then they were all implemented at the same time. And then we do the next rotation of policy review and adoption first read. We do the first read at our individual boards. Why don't we do the second read at our individual boards?
Well, what I could add is that, you know, I think the part of the design of to have the first read at individual boards, that's the opportunity to say, okay, I've reviewed these. I know we're not voting on it, it's just for review. However, you know, this one in particular, I think, you know, we need to revisit it at our own board meeting next month.
We don't vote for it at the joint board meeting? Is that what happens?
That is something that you could decide, and that, in fact, is what's happening here. You know, that's what's happening tonight, in that there are three. We're just showing you for your information, but you're not voting on those three for the high school.
Okay, like I said, I'll defer to the group, it just, I'm not. Okay, like I said, I'll defer to the group, but just, I I'm not looking to make more work. I certainly appreciate the work that's being done by the SAU and the the policy um committee. Um, I just, I I think we might be misplaced in when we're adopting.
I thank you, Tom. I appreciate that. I think at this point, though, um, I'm to the point where I think I'd like to keep it the way it is, just because having been on the board so long that it's finally, I'm seeing the uniformity of, like Rhonda said, getting them all up to date and whatnot. I know that um, from my own standpoint, uh, years ago, it was one of those things too, with your agenda got to be overwhelming at the, you know, the at your board meetings. The first thing that got dropped off was policies, and I think that's how we all got behind the eight ball on not being up to date on them. It's like you're out there putting out fires at your local, you know, at your, the um, district meetings, not, you know, at the joint board. So at this point, I I don't think it's something that we can't revisit again, but I think right now I'd like to just leave it the way it is, if that's all right with the rest of the board.
Leslie, it's Greg. Rhonda, is it my understanding that these policies are still or what we're looking to vote on tonight are still mandatory policies, or we executed all the mandatory policies?
We are, we are getting to the end. Um, there were a couple, like there is one policy on here. There's two policies on here specifically, bidding requirements and public gifts and donations. Those are not required by law, but they're required by auditors. That is something that every board, and I think Matt can speak to this, got dinged on in their audit because those policies didn't address what they needed to address. And when the auditors are looking at them, they're expecting those same standards from all five districts. So in that case, that's where it makes sense to bring that forward. You know, so that's how we've been approaching this. We've been trying to cover all of the required ones first. And then we're looking at the other policies that that maybe the law doesn't says, doesn't require. But the auditors are requiring, and it's more, you know, of that nature that that needs to be done.
Well, we'll also continue to have um policies that are required by law um come to the policy committee because new laws occur every year. So there's there's you know, some years you might have like fifteen new policies because legislator was, you know, they they were busy. And and they're updating existing laws. So that so that's, that's something we should certainly um maintain those those state and federal um policy reviews.
Right. I mean, just for instance, a couple of the policies you have tonight, we reviewed them and adopted them a year and a half ago, and then the legislature made changes and and updated the wording, so they're back again. You know, so just trying to keep up with that in a timely manner versus how we used to do it. Um, it just didn't get done in the past. Or it might get done with one board and not another board, and then it was like, okay, where's, you know, who's who's got it? Who doesn't have it? You know, it it just happened all too frequently, unfortunately.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Leslie, it's Greg. I I I think Tommy makes a really good point here and actually presents a really good question, but I do agree with you. Um, you know, for for right now, maybe move on, but could I maybe see if we could get that on the, this on the agenda for a future joint board meeting? Because I do think it might be worth a conversation.
Sure. Sure. We can do that.
I think it's also worth um um, the the SAU's time to consult with legal and just, I I am fairly certain that Dr. Lupini verified with um with our legal counsel that um, when the joint board made these um, these approvals that applied to the individual districts. But let's um, we will verify that um, to ensure that we we do have the the correct process from that standpoint. And then the board can obviously decide how they want to address it from a process standpoint, um, joint or individually.
All right. Thanks, Matt. So do I have a motion on these, or do we have any more discussion? Sorry. Any more discussion?
I'll make a motion to adopt this presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. We do a roll call? Please.
Getting there, I'm filling in the names.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anthony Lang.
Yes.
Barbara Goodman.
Yes.
Greg Parrish.
Yes.
Jason Ferius.
Yes.
Brian Belanger.
Yes.
Martin Tavishian.
Yes.
Yermina Peterson.
Yes.
Tom Von Jess.
Yes.
Christina Kaiser.
Yes.
Forrest Carter.
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard.
Yes.
Kelly Huber.
Yes.
Jim Kine. Is Jim with us?
Sorry about that. Yes.
Okay, thanks. Rebecca Verdic.
Yes.
Sharon Gordon.
Yes.
Leslie LaFawn.
Yes.
Nicole Seiko.
Yeah.
And Tricia O'Keefe.
Yes.
Okay, I have that vote recorded.
Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is the uh interim superintendent evaluation. So Caroline and I spoke, and um she's going to present her reflections on um, how she feels she met those goals, correct? And then um after that, we'll discuss, but we're going to let Caroline present at this point. Please.
Thank you. Um, so I've attached the reflection to the three goals. Uh, the board asked me to look at back in January during this six-month interim term. Um, so I'll just highlight a few pieces here, but that is there for your review. Um, the first one is about return to in-person learning and planning ahead. So um, you know, along with the senior staff, I worked very closely with principals um and directors to increase in-person learning uh from the very beginning of of uh, January, from right when I um got started. Um, in fact, all of our schools were in person, five days per week, well in advance of the executive orders. Um, this took a lot of work, um, and we, as we just discussed, while keeping all of the, you know, safety protocols in place. Uh, this was an incredible feat as far as, you know, um, making sure our furniture was distanced, bringing in an increased number of kids um, as the weeks went on. Um, it was a different formula per district, per school, sometimes by grade level. Um, as far as which days, which times, um, students would come in, how student services filled in um all the gaps every time there was a change. In addition, we um, expanded the day at Lincoln Agerman School. So I do um outline that here as far as um the five days a week reopening across all of our schools. And then also as far as um recovery, the summer programming that the districts are are putting together um, are are much more varied and robust than than ever. Winnicott is putting together, already has put together, um, many class offerings. Um, they they presented that to the board um, not too long ago, and Seabrook is putting, is offering summer programming for kids in more grades than they than they ever have. Um, so um, this is in an effort to um, help students recover whatever learning loss, so academically, social, emotionally, um, and to work with teachers who are available um and ready to to work with kids this summer and our educational associates as as well. So that's that's the first goal. There's more um details there as far as how um, I supported that effort. The vaccine clinics were were also a big piece of that. You know, that's something that uh was very important to us to help um teachers um have access to the vaccine if that was, you know, something they wanted to pursue, because that's something that will help our schools um reopen to the fullest capacity in the fall, and that's our intention. Full days, um, same capacity of transportation, classrooms as it was the pre-pandemic times. So um, we knew, I knew that offering the vaccines were only going to help in that effort, um particularly as we're we're speaking to our unions. Communication is the second goal. Um, by the end of my term as interim superintendent, I will have sent out a total of twenty-four weekly newsletters to all employees and families. Of course, I did not do this alone. I know I'm supposed to be talking about my progress, but I'm going to be, I can't just talk about my progress. Um, all of these things are a group effort. Um, Rhonda, Matt, David, and Nancy Tuttle uh contributed to these letters. Um, they reviewed them in early mornings, late nights. Um, it it, there's a lot behind the scenes to those. Um, so we're really proud of that. That said, I totally recognize that's one way to dispense information. That's one-way communication. Um, so I knew it was important to to offer some time um, so so I could hear staff members, and I could hear parents, and I could hear students um during this during this term. So I offered listening sessions, and I reported that out to the boards. I also reported that out to administrators as far as what people wanted to wanted to get across, what they wanted to tell me, what they wanted to share with the SAU. And so then we worked on that with our um, with our administrators. Uh, I met with senior staff weekly, um principals every other week, directors on alternate weeks, nurses every month. This was so that there was a constant stream of communication going throughout all of our schools, all of our districts. Um, parents are interconnected, teachers are interconnected, um, and um, they had some themes, they had some pieces that they wanted to to get to us, so we would um, work on that with our with our staff, and that's that's what we did. Um, let's see. Oh, in addition, I got out to all the schools. So usually, that's something superintendents do at least monthly regardless. But going out to all the schools in the month of March of of twenty twenty-one was like, it was huge. It was huge. And um, it was my absolute pleasure to do that. I was the first visitor that some of the schools had in an entire year. Um, it was, it was the fun part of of this job that I had been missing to be able to see all the kids, to see all the teachers, to poke my head into the rooms, to have conversations with classes and hear from kids. Um, so that's something, it seems like a small gesture, but I got incredible feedback from that, and um, it was really helpful um as far as keeping that connection, that communication loop going. And then last but not least, the the easy one, um, identity. So um, this one is about the interim superintendent will work closely with the SAU administrative team, building level administrators and school boards to recommend and identify areas where member districts can be aligned and where they should remain autonomous. So um, I don't know, Jim, you and I came up with this with this last one. And I offer some suggestions. I have not solved the puzzle. Um, but what I can say is that, you know, just having this question out there, having this you know, kind of as a problem of practice for this group is very healthy, um, because we are connected. Um, and people are already working together. Um, every single day I outline all of that in there if if, you know, you want to see some specific examples. But every single day, people are asking us to work together. They work together in groups. There's very little we do that is in isolation of, let's just do something for one school. Let's just do something for another school. People want to work together, and they're leading the way. They're leading the way because it's what's best for students. Um, it's what students want, and ultimately, we're responsible for having a cohesive educational experience for kids um, because we share a high school. Our kids, you know, ultimately end up ninth grade, most of them um, to one high school, and um, that's where the rubber hits the road for us. So I do outline here, I think the challenge really lies with Winnicott. Um, you know, it's a place where I worked for eight years. Now, you know, at SAU twenty-one um cumulatively for ten years, um, I've observed what what teachers want. I've observed what kids want um, and what people do um in our districts and what they do together, and they're showing us that they want to work together. Um, but they're also showing us that they want to choose how they work together. Um, so that's something that I think is is a beautiful thing, and that we should just work our very hardest to support that. I I mean, we, like, the SAU and the board. As far as where the the joint board should be aligned and work and work together and or, you know, work autonomously. Um, we just had a conversation about that with with the policies, right? So I think that's something that, you know, I would recommend an an approach for this board, not to say you know, we have to agree to work together in certain areas, or we have to agree to be autonomous in other areas. I think when we have an open mind and that we are, you know, we're making uh decisions with students as our focus, it's okay to be different. It's okay to sometimes work together, and it's okay to sometimes work apart. But, you know, we're not going to know what those circumstances are until we get there. So it's really about a philosophy and approach. I'll give you an example, probably the best example, I might say, this joint board has ever had, and that was last August. So there was one meeting where you decided to work together on one thing, and you decided to work apart in another way. Um, so you found the line, you found the line of where, you know, you wanted to work together for the Remote Learning Academy to happen. And you knew, working together, that was going to support your kids and and keep your kids in schools. And that was a beautiful thing that's still going on to this day. But you also knew you wanted to vote separately for your reopening plan, and and that's what you did. So so I think when those things happen, that's something that, you know, we just need to realize whenever we're approaching those those moments to make that decision, is that we keep those values that SU twenty-one has had this entire time in mind about safety, social, emotional wellness, academic excellence. Um, and, you know, all thinking about students first. So that's my recommendation. It's more than just from five months, it's for for a long time. Um, but I'm happy to take any questions, and I just want to thank you for for giving me this opportunity. I still have a month left. Um, and it's been, it's been a fantastic learning experience, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Caroline. Um, does anybody have any questions or comments?
I do. Uh, Caroline, thank you. Um, and and thank you for the for your leadership. It's it's been wonderful. Uh, what I'd like to know is if you can identify a few areas that you think Winnicott needs to work on um, to meet these goals or um, get on the same page, if you will, with the sending districts.
So the first thing I'd say is, you know, um, is is academics. And so the work that Dr. Hobbs leads is in is incredible. It, you know, hasn't been done before. As far as the math, math review was was step one. Next step is world language review. This is an analysis of the districts, you know, the K eights. Um, as far as where they are, what those students need to have access to in order to, uh, you know, reach their highest potential at the high school. So to your question, Greg, I would say that, you know, with that, I'd like to challenge Winnicott at the same time to be flexible in in what they're offering in their practices. And and the guidance department right now is doing just that. So I don't mean to put Winnicott down the spot. Leslie, I promise. Um, I'm not trying to say Winnicott kind of, you know, get on, get on the stick here. I'm not saying that. Um, I'm saying that, you know, Winnicott has has uh they receive all the kids, you know, and so it's not about, I think the focus for a long time has been, hey, K eights, you guys all got to get together and do the same thing. And I think that that kind of hurt us a little bit. So I'm saying alternatively, you know, Winnicott could could also meet that challenge. You know, the K eights have had to have that challenge. Winnicott can also say, okay, given these differences, we're going to respect the differences of the different K eights, and we're going to be flexible as a result. But they're well on their way. Winnicott's well on their way with that.
Um, I was going to say they have, they've started. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, as far as like, you know, Heather Cronin, the director of school counseling at Winnicott, has all kinds of ideas that she's going to bring. I'm not going to no spoilers, but she is going to be bringing some things forward to Winnicott that'll be really exciting and really helps students. So from all our districts.
And I don't, I, for for what it's worth, I don't think you are putting Winnicott on the spot. Winnicott is the, is uh on the back end of this journey for these kids, and it's a crucial journey, and so we're all relying on them to pick up that baton, if you will, and carry them through. So I don't think you're putting them on the spot.
Great, great.
Um, is this a multi-year um effort on Winnicott's to get the, get this transition com- effort on Winnicott's to get the get this transition completed? And even though it's a work in progress each year, or is this something that can be accomplished in a 12-month timeframe?
Well, I think there are there are all kinds of pieces to it. So, you know, your first question is, was, what can we do? What can Winnicott do? One piece is academic. One piece is social, emotional. One piece is about services and supports, systems vertically. So there are a lot of different things happening. Some things can happen in 12 months. Some things will happen in a few years. It's it's different teams who are working on that.
Okay, thank you.
And Greg, just so you know, like our last meeting, they just presented with some of the funds that we're using and we're, you know, we're implementing more services, we're implementing more classes for exactly that, to hit to hit all the different levels instead of keeping everybody, because it is true. That's what we've we've all worked on that. All of our districts have worked on that as long as I've been on the board. That was the big thing, vertical teams. Let's get everybody so they're all prepared and getting there. And now it's changing the direction and it's, we're just, I think, building on that. I think Winnicott's always had something for everybody there. You know, that was one of their things that they they build on is that there's something there for everybody and there's different pathways of getting there. But now they're really focusing on the social and emotional part of it also, and that, you know, let's hit every every student needs to the best of our ability. So with that grant money that we're using for the next three years, we're implementing things as soon as September. So.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Other than to say thank you for the amazing job that you've done. I honestly don't know where this district would be if you hadn't stepped in. So personally and from the board, I'm going to say thank you 110%. So we truly appreciate your guidance.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I'm I want to echo that as well. Have an idea where we would have been and I'm so thankful that you stepped up for for everybody involved here. You stepped up for the kids, you stepped up for the staff, the board. It really was truly an incredible decision to to step up and and help us all out. And thank you so much. You've done a fantastic job for for everybody involved.
Thank you.
All right. So as far as, because in the past, when we've done, when we have superintendent evaluations, you know, we've always sent out things to the boards and we do all of that, where this is a six-month interim. What we've decided to go for is a letter that will go into Caroline's file that from the joint board. And Jim, I'm probably going to have you sign this with me because you worked with her, you know, through half of it. So I would like you to join me on the letter. But just something that goes into her file saying, you know, how she met the goals and whatnot. So and I think it just needs to be a letter form if that's okay with the rest of the board, rather than going through the whole procedure of it'll be a month before we get things done. I think we can all pretty much agree that the goals were met as as they were outlined. So if anybody has any issues with that, let me know.
I think that's a better solution than a full-fledged evaluation. So I I'm in agreement with you on this one.
All right. Okay. All right. Next up is our financial report.
Thank you. So as we wind down the fiscal year, we have about a just over a month remaining before fiscal year end, June 30. We are in good financial shape on the on the SAU side. Overall, we, you know, we're approximately $50,000 to $60,000 of available funds. This has been a unique and challenging year. So are many of our accounts, you know, we see some accounts were way over and other accounts were were way under budget. So I just want to briefly summarize some of those major variances. The first of which is professional development where we have $25,000 in available funds. Obviously with a COVID year and that has affected, you know, our our expenditures for for professional development. Similarly, we are seeing savings in our administrator's salary account of almost $40,000. This is owing to the fact that we were down one senior leadership member when Dr. Eric Halian took the helm as superintendent. So we did recognize savings there. On the flip side, we are over budget on contracted services by approximately $17,000. This is in large part due to the the superintendent search firm. We contracted with the New Hampshire School Boards Association and the Brian Group to conduct our superintendent search as well as the consulting fee we we contracted Dr. Lupini for the six months to mentor Dr. Eric Halian. Additionally, we're over budget our legal account by $11,000 or just about $11,000. And this is, this really is directly related to COVID related items as far as reopening, you know, union negotiations, all COVID-related questions and and legal counsel that we've had to to utilize. Our health insurance is over budget by $25,000. This, these are one, that's one of those accounts where, you know, we budget a year in advance. And then, you know, our employees make their elections and we did pick up an extra health insurance plan with with staff turnover. And then finally, our repair and maintenance account is over budget by $60,000. Now that that's kind of a misnomer there. We're truly not over budget by $60,000. That reflects our windows and siding project. So in previous budget cycles, we had set aside funds for our windows and siding projects and put it into our unreserved fund balance. And that project is $75,000 project. So in reality, we're about $15,000 under budget in that account. So I do want to just remind the joint board, each individual school district, at the end of the year, any available funds with, you know, unexpendable funds and unanticipated revenue results in an unreserved fund balance. Now that unreserved fund balance can fund expendable trusts and then any remaining balance is returned to the town to offset tax assessment. Now, the SAU budget is under a different structure where we can maintain an unreserved fund balance from year to year. That's not returned. So we did, so we do have approximately $190,000 and that's where that those that windows and windows and siding projects funds are coming from. And we try to maintain a balance there for any unanticipated cost, similar to how the school districts have their expendable trust since we're, the SAU, it has no mechanism for expendable trusts. We have the expendable, the unreserved fund balance for any any unanticipated or or new new expenditures. So for year end, we're, you know, we'll likely finish, you know, once you reduce the windows and siding in the $50,000 range with available funds. So we are, we are in good shape going into the next fiscal year for July 1. So I'd be happy to answer any questions or regard to any specific accounts or general financial questions.
Any questions for Matt? All right, seeing none. Thanks, Matt. Appreciate it. We are, we now need to go into non-public. But can I have a motion to go into non-public?
I make a motion to go in non-public.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Anthony Lang.
Yes.
Barbara Goodman.
Yes.
Greg Parrish.
Yes.
Jason Perius.
Yes.
Brian Belanger.
Yes.
Martin Tavishian.
Yes.
Jermina Peterson.
Yes.
Tom Von Jess.
Yes.
Christina Kaiser.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard.
Yes.
Ellie Huber.
Yes.
Jim Kine.
Yes.
Yes. Sharon Gordon.
Yes.
Yes. Nicole Seiko. Nicole Seiko.
Yes.
And Tricia O'Keefe.
Yes.
Okay. You are. Sorry, guys, I forgot to do the future meetings, but we can do that when we come out. I apologize. Right. So you're now in non-public. I'm going to pause the meeting recording. I'm going to break this in.
Yes.
Jermina Peterson.
Yes.
Tom Von.
Yes.
Christina Kaiser.
Yes.
Forrest Carter.
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard.
Yes.
Ellie Huber.
Yes.
Jim Kine.
Yes.
Rebecca Verdic.
Yes.
Sharon Gordon.
Yes.
Leslie LaFawn.
Yes.
Nicole Seiko.
Yes.
Tricia O'Keefe.
Yes.
All right, I have that recorded. You have closed the public session and resumed 7:41 PM. Thank you very much.
Leslie, I'd like to make a motion. Like to make a motion to recommend that we approve the contract for superintendent of schools as presented effective July 1, 2021.
Thank you, Tom.
I'll second.
Okay, are we ready for a vote? Yes, please. Anthony Lang.
Yes.
Barbara Goodman.
Yes.
Greg Parrish.
Yes.
Jason Perius.
Yes.
Brian Belanger.
Yes.
Martin Tavishian.
Yes.
Jermina Peterson.
Yes.
Tom Von Jess.
Yes.
Christina Kaiser.
Yes.
Forrest Carter.
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard.
Yes.
Kelly Huber.
No.
Jim Kine.
Yes.
Rebecca Verdic.
Yes.
Sharon Gordon.
Yes.
Leslie LaFawn.
Yes.
Nicole Seiko.
Yes.
Tricia O'Keefe.
Yes.
Hey, that vote's recorded. Approving the contract for the superintendent of schools.
Leslie, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to approve the title change in three-year contract for the Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, formerly known as the Director of Student Services, as presented.
I will second again.
Thank you both. I have a roll call, please. Anthony Lang.
Yes.
Barbara Goodman.
Yes.
Greg Parrish.
Yes.
Jason Perius.
Yes.
Enter.
Yes.
Martin Tavishian.
Yes.
Jermina Peterson.
Yes.
Tom Von Jess.
Yes.
Christina Kaiser.
Yes.
Forrest Carter.
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard.
Yes.
Ellie Huber.
No.
Jim Kine.
Yes.
Rebecca Verdic. Sharon Gordon.
Yes.
Leslie LaFawn.
Yes.
Nicole Seiko.
Yes.
And Tricia O'Keefe.
Yes.
Hey, I have that vote recorded, approving the title change in three-year contract for the Assistant Superintendent. Thank you very much.
To accept the retirement and approval of the stipend for Mary Platnick as accounts payable bookkeeper effective May 31, 2021. Platnick, I apologize for my pronunciation.
Jermina Peterson. Okay, we ready for a vote? Anthony Lang.
Yes.
Barbara Goodman.
Yes.
Greg Parrish.
Yes.
Jason Perius.
Yes.
Brian Belanger.
Yes.
Martin Tavishian.
Yes.
Jermina Peterson.
Yes.
Tom Von Jess.
Yes.
Christina Kaiser.
Yes.
Forrest Carter.
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard.
Yes.
Kelly Huber.
Yes.
Jim Kine.
Yes.
Rebecca Verdic.
I remember I used to.
Yes. Leslie LaFawn.
Yes.
Nicole Seiko.
Yeah.
Yes.
Tricia O'Keefe.
Yes.
Okay, I have that vote recorded to accept the retirement and approval of the stipend for Mary Platnick. Thank you very much. You're welcome. Don't forget to do the next meeting date. Next meeting dates are future meeting dates. You'll see your board schedule, right? That that schedule, everybody has theirs, your individual ones that are there and listed. Our next joint board policy committee is Wednesday, August 25. The next OC is Tuesday, October 8. And our next joint board meeting is October 19. Do we not meet till October? Yeah. Cool. It'll be budgetary for next year. Oh, gee, thanks. All right, great. Thank you, everybody, for for coming tonight. I appreciate everybody's thoughts and input. It's it's invaluable. So I appreciate it.
Motion adjourned.
Thank you, Greg.
I will second.
Sweet. All right, all those in favor, just wave. Wave. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.